It's seven o'clock. All set? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Town of McCamus Planning Commission meeting. We're one week late due to the election last Tuesday. But this is our November meeting. We have two primary items on the agenda. The first item is Schultz, Schultz Ford Lincoln dealership preliminary land development application. And I believe we have a presentation and discussion for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I actually, I just have one question about this since I know some things have kind of shifted over the course of, you know, when we have originally got it into now. So this is still coming in as preliminary, but it's a single phase.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any reason you don't want to do combined preliminary final?
Uh, we just not know we can do it that at this point, um, we thought it'd be better to just do the preliminary plans for now.
I guess feel free to upgrade. If there's no reason that we couldn't just add the the final aspect in if if you, I mean, you don't have to.
Yeah.
But you may, if you so choose, since it's just a single phase now.
Sure, sure. I mean, yeah, because before we were going in two phases, we thought we could just do the paving. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm David Lucian from Victor Wutzel Associates. I'm sorry, sorry. I just, uh, I wanted to, you know, I didn't know if I was gonna be speaking or you're gonna keep on going with a second, um, presentation. But anyways, uh, we're here for Schultz Ford EV. Uh, and, uh, we were, again, like I said before, we previously, we're looking at a two-phase development of just doing the paving first. And then in the grading and then do the buildings, but I believe we found out that Townham County, we cannot do that. We have to have built a structure as well. So we are now doing the structure as well as the paving and the grading for the entire site. So, um,
I have a couple PowerPoint files sent. Which one do you want me to?
Show me the primary plan, the the first one. Yes.
I've got site plan or no?
Yes, give me the site plan first. So this property is basically across the street from the Schultz Ford dealership today. Uh, the total property that when we do this, the unification plan will be three point two seven one acres total. Um, this was, this whole entire property is in the C three zoning district. Um, as you recall, before we were here for the rezoning of the, uh, the back piece, uh, that was R two, and we got it rezoned to to C three. So the entire property is in the C three zoning district.
Just sorry, I'll, I promise I'll stop interrupting this.
Sorry?
This is a weird one because it was submitted prior to us passing our new zoning ordinance. So although technically the C three district does not exist anymore, and this is now MU, the mixed-use urban neighborhood district. Um, it continues to be reviewed under the old code and use the C three requirements, restrictions, and so on, since it was submitted prior to passage. Okay.
That was good. RJ, I'm glad you, uh, spoke up because I probably wouldn't, uh, could could say that. At a point later, we'll say. So we're proposing one-story building total of eighteen thousand seven hundred square feet. Um, five thousand one hundred square feet will be in the front, uh, portion with a smaller rectangle. And then larger, uh, rectangle will be thirteen thousand six hundred square feet. Now we will with the service areas. Uh, we're telling a hundred and fifty spaces. The area will be, you know, again, the property is off of the Schultz Ford on the, uh, I guess that would be the west side, on the east side of of nineteen. Uh, this is me, this proposed development. The front portion thirty-three spaces will be the customer parking. And again, where we're building this is for the EV, the electronic, uh, the electric vehicles. Uh, Schultz Ford is going to be, uh, building and, uh, getting, uh, new new vehicles. So we want to have a dealership just, uh, for the electric vehicles. Um, again, thirty-three spaces will be in the front, and then we'll have the majority of the hundred and seventeen spaces will be into the rear of the building and to the south. And those are for the service parking, uh, vehicles as well as the storage vehicles. Um, stormwater, as you can see in that light green, uh, area beyond the most eastern side of the property will be our stormwater management facility. And that's going to be our detention. We're going to be, uh, detaining the water. And then there is a twenty-foot easement that's beyond, uh, our property that we have rights to to connect our stormwater to an existing catch spaces. That is at the northeast corner of that sheet. So that's how we're going to be doing stormwater. Um, if you can go to the landscape plan, that was the third, uh, slide I gave you. That one, okay? If you, uh, this just shows you that, uh, all the landscaping that we're proposing. Uh, we meet all the requirements for the buffer yard and landscaping. Since R two is at our southwest corner, uh, or excuse me, southeast corner of the property. Um, will be, yeah, ha- ha- that the town council has a bigger buffer yard requirement. So we're going to be buffering that, uh, east side and southeast side, uh, more, as you can see, the plantings there. The majority of everywhere else is, um, uh, regular plantings that will be, uh, uh, buffering. So we meet those requirements. Um, we, we are asking for two modifications on this plan. Um, one would be at that southwest corner of the property, southwest, southeast corner of the property. We were proposing a two-to-one slope in that area, uh, near, um, the, what, that's, that's the area on that side. Um, and that was just try to get as much parking we can get on the property, uh, that we're, uh, uh, building on. Um, the, we did get a geotactical report that states that the two-to-one slopes will will work on on, you know, on that soil. Uh, we're also asking for a to not propose or not to build and construct a sidewalk on Einhaus. Einhaus Road actually connects to nineteen and that's the very southerly side of our property and goes east to west. And we would have to propose a, uh, build a sidewalk along our frontage, uh, located, uh, in that area. And, you know, there's no reason for connection to that Einhaus, uh, uh, connection there because there are no sidewalks, uh, would be between the nineteen and where our property is. So those are our two modifications. Go back to the last slide that I sent you. This is the plan that if we cannot get the modifications.
Oh, just kidding.
That we would then be allowed to do a three, we'd have required to do a three-to-one slope. So you can see we'd be lessen the amount of parking by ten spaces. As well as we would have to install the sidewalk other at our southerly side. So that would be, this plan would show no modifications required. Now, we did receive a comment letter from the the town, uh, November seventh, and we're working on, uh, redressing those comments. We can be submitting that probably the end of this week for you, uh, for, um, all the, uh, um, responses. We don't see, uh, any issues with the, um, the comments that we have right now. So I can, uh, entertain any questions or answer any question that you guys have.
I have a question.
Sure.
And this is also for the for the commission. So as I remembered.
Yes.
I may just remember. Um, the five EV charging stations you're putting in.
Yes.
Is a requirement of Ford for public, more or less, not necessarily for your customers. That's how it was explained at the zoning meeting that in order to be selling.
Yeah.
In order to be selling the electric vehicles, Ford required that you put in a certain number of public access.
Okay.
EV charging.
Honestly, I I I could honestly tell you, I don't remember the word for word like that, but that probably does make sense. We do are showing five EV, uh, uh, stations there.
So I have difficulty, and this is something we need to think about for other applications. You know, in a parking lot like McCamus Crossing where you have EV chargers, that's the people using McCamus Crossing that are charging there. These are not necessarily your customers, and therefore they're not necessarily customer parking.
Mm-hmm.
You have more than enough parking. I'm not challenging that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just like us to think about how we want to evaluate that in the future as whether or not those are parking spaces or they are. Uh, excuse me, customer parking spaces or not. And then the only other question I had was, and I'm having difficulty with some of the drawings because of the way the the, um, ink came out on them. Am I missing a sidewalk proposed along Perry Highway?
Uh, well, so in this, in this color illustration to me, like, I I can see this. Yeah, well, I can just point on the screen.
Proposed sidewalk, the full length.
Yeah, I can, I can see it. It is there.
Okay. And then the only other question I had was looking at, and this is a a question we've had on on a number of applications. It, it, I can't tell if your new proposed drive is a opposing on Perry Highway a restricted turn lane for the light or if it's actually a turn either way lane.
This is a full movement intersection. There's no, there's no, uh, uh, right in, right out on this for for this, uh, connection, if that's what you're asking.
No, the question, the question was on Perry Highway, how is it marked? Is it, it looks like there's a dedicated turn lane for the intersection.
Okay.
Not that has a double yellow line, not a turn lane to be able to turn left into your property. I'm just trying to understand.
I believe we are going to apply for a full movement intersection that there will be a left, be able to turn left, left turns into this.
So that it's an application we're making depend on?
Yes, that is definitely in an HOP that we're asking for.
So that will also address the concern I have about the limited offset between the two parking, between the two drives.
Yes, yes, we have to get an HOP. That'll be a pen dot requirement.
And you guys didn't show your, yes, because it's kind of a pen dot.
Okay, yes, for pen dot, it was about skills. I mean, they tend to invite us to like this, this meeting. We do have the opportunity to to talk to them about junk.
If you could bring back the information on that, it would be great, just how they plan to address that.
Yeah, I, Kelly, we usually have Mike go to those.
Yes.
If so, if I can't make it, can we just make sure that he, you know, there's meeting minutes or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Shelley, do you have questions?
I just was, um, when it comes to my mind is where your, um, where your stormwater system is, and then, um, you have Ashley Hill, the back of those properties there. So you're saying that, um, I just want to understand here that you have because it look, the connection is off of your property. So is that a public easement?
It's a, it's an easement that we have rights to on from from this.
So that is already rights that you have today.
I guess there was an existing easement there today that we can connect to that drainage channel. And we're allowed to to connect to that existing catch spaces that is in that channel.
Okay.
Um, that's why we're going to be connecting. I think at one time previously, we were just going to discharge right into that channel, the existing drainage channel there.
Right.
But I think we believe, you know, it was better to connect by s- by storm pipe to that existing inlet rather than to just drain into that inlet.
Okay, and then my second question, which relates to the same area, is the work that you're doing that is, I guess, over your property line there, um, is that going to have, um, any material impact on the, um, residential properties that are behind it?
We're, we're not going to be disturbing it because that that channel is already built there.
Okay, so any of their, the trees and things that they have is further to east.
For the east, yes.
Okay.
I do think on, um, the stormwater plan, they are showing a lining of that channel. Um, and just to note as well, I know we pulled the plan for that easement, um, and we just saw that it was labeled on a plan as a twenty-foot easement. So one of our comments, um, comment ten is just a, we would want to see some clear indications of future ownership and maintenance of that swell moving forward, um, between the property owners. So that's clearly defined.
Um, maintenance agreement, some kind of thing like that?
Yes, yeah, it may need to be adjusted based off of what's, you know, currently, um, existing thing.
All right.
Um, just since it, um, just states it's a twenty-foot swell, and I don't think the plan said who it was in favor of.
Okay.
Um, so just one item to note there. And I know too, I stopped out there quickly just to take a look at the condition of the swell, and it looked like there was some debris down in there. So that would be the big thing. Um, it is, it is a defined swell, so that's good. A lot of times you find those backyard swells aren't maintained. Um, but you could see it, but I would just, you know, recommend that that's clear and and understood with the owners of those lots as well.
Okay.
Who's going to own and maintain that for the life of the the project?
Does that, um, so I'm familiar, I actually used to own property in, yeah, in the plan. Um, and there's, um, a detention retention pond that's on the other side of Ashley Hill Drive. Um, from this, does this, is this whale going? Would, which way is this draining once it hits the swell? Is it heading north? It is, it's heading north. So this is not connecting first to the east into that.
It connects to the north and goes into the storm sewer in the rear yard, and then it eventually makes its way into that Ashley Hills basin.
Which probably also, I don't know if that's a private basin or not, but.
It's a town-owned basin. That one is, yeah. And one of, one of the comments that we did have was, so there's different points of interest that are studied for stormwater, and one of the points of in- interest is at that rear yard property line.
Yeah.
Um, and we did identify that the rate was exceeding the preconditions there. So we, in order for us to be okay with the, um, rate of water leaving this point of the property, we would want to see that below the preconditions. So then that way we can say that the system upstream is not being compromised, or going to experience any sort of overflow.
Excellent. That was what actually I was getting to.
Okay.
That I was concerned that the system that was built for that plan would be overloaded.
We saw those comments from Gateway. We're going to be, uh, adjusting our our stormwater reports and and submit it to the town.
Okay. All right.
Switch over at the other end, Al. If you're interested, you can head on up.
Can I, I, this, I, there was a, there was an issue that Gateway had about the parking table, what was shown was provided a one fifty-five versus one fifty-one thing. Someone addressed.
Yeah, I think it was just a, um, a difference in final count numbers. It wasn't anything related to like ordinance requirements. It was just a difference in total counts that we got versus what was on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
I think we, maybe it should be one fifty?
One fifty, yes. Yeah, I think I adjusted that to make sure that we, uh, I I think we responded to the one.
Or one forty-five. Depending on how you.
Depending on how you look at it, yeah.
Yes.
Which is clearly more than the, what was it, twenty-nine or whatever that was required under the code?
Yes, twenty-nine, yes.
Um, I mean, I'm trying to think because McCamus Crossing was done way before I was here, you know, but, um.
Does the town have anything on new development that you need to have an EV? One EV space, some, some of those paddles have it.
Uh, okay. I think we actually put like a small amount of bicycle parking in the new code, but not required.
They could make accommodations for it, but there wasn't a minimum requirement.
Right, yeah. So I mean, I know that when McCamus Crossing added a couple EV spots, because my assumption was that plan was approved with those spots being, like, I'm sure that they didn't overpark that. That, so like when they, when they were taking out a couple of regular spots for EV, I asked them to replace. So I would say that, yeah.
But those are presumably people who are using McCamus Crossing, which are customers.
Well, I mean, we don't know. I'd say.
I mean, it, but it's a safer bet than.
Either way.
People are going to drive their electric vehicles in here to charge when they're looking at buying another electric vehicle.
I did not include, like, when they took those spots and put them into EV at the McCamus Crossing. We required them to replace with non-EV spots because my assumption is that plan.
Yeah.
Was, you know.
I'm, so.
So I would say I, we probably, if it, if we were bumping up against our minimum, we probably wouldn't count them, but it's still probably good to note how many there are in the parking table. Just maybe that's not like part of your requirement. You know what I'm saying, Kelly? Yeah.
We included them as part of our parking.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And there would be. If it hadn't been presented to us in the original zoning request.
Yeah.
That this was a requirement of Ford, that this was sort of a public service.
Yeah.
The community that wasn't a, all right, loosely associated with your dealership because Ford's requiring it for you to have a dealership. But, um, not required of your customers.
Yeah, okay. Yep, I understand what you're saying.
How was the five determined is is is?
They felt like.
Because there's five, is five a minimum for this size?
Not by us. We, that was from Ford.
That was Ford's requirement. Based on the number of vehicles you're selling, right?
But, yeah, I mean, it was.
This could, public could be.
Yeah, this is set up for the public.
Five, given the size of this and public charge and potentially public charging, doesn't that seem like a small, um, a small amount of charging spaces?
I mean, it's spaces that, they're all fast chargers, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I assume they're going to be, yes, yes. I mean, I I really, I mean, I think.
They're supposed to be.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Because the idea is that we're trying to build this like a metas.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you have a, if you're driving somewhere and you're a Ford customer, you know that you can go to the different dealerships and charge your vehicle was the concept they would, they gave us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they, it's.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I have a couple, but go ahead. Go ahead, Brendan.
The slope.
Yes.
The two-to-one versus three-to-one modification.
Yeah.
Got a lot of parking there.
Sure.
Um, is there a a defined table of how many total spots of parking are needed for a facility like this? Or is the idea more is better because more is better, so therefore we want the modification?
Well, I mean, we, I would like to say that, you know, we are showing this as as a dealership. So, yeah, we would like to see as much vehicle spaces that we can have to accommodate on this property. But if if, you know, if the town doesn't feel like we need to have the 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 modification of of two-to-one slopes, then, uh, then we could go back and I could, I showed you that we would be down by ten space. So that's, that's the only, you know, thing.
Is, is there a metric that exists, whether it's for EV dealerships or otherwise, that Schultz or anybody else uses as a ratio?
Of what, how much storage they need?
Yeah.
I, you know, I, I, we were talking, and I I think it's going to be more and more now, I don't think there's going to be as much storage of parking because it seems like cars are just getting, you know, there's, there's not that many cars and and so, um.
I mean, the strategy prior to COVID was very different, like the, back then, the idea was essentially the more cars that you have on your lot, the more that you're going to sell. So there was a really high priority, you know, pre-two thousand and twenty to just have as much room as possible to require inventory, whereas I don't really think there's.
I, I, and I, I, I agree with you on that, yeah. I think it's hard for them to actually get as many cars than to, you know, store them on on the property because people just keep on buying them, you know, because there's always been a shortage.
Buying them off the coming in list.
After COVID, it seems like that's what it is now. So.
All your money into that inventory.
It's just, we, we, we were able to have a geotactical report that showed that we can meet the two-to-one requirements with the soils that are out there. So that's why the the plan shows that a two-to-one slope.
But is it, is it, are those ten spots needed to conduct the business? Or is it just, we got room for ten more spots and we could do the slope?
Yeah.
So why not just have ten more spots?
I, I, I think the second one is probably what, 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 what we're doing here, yes. Honestly, you know, I'm being honest, yeah. And I understand what you're saying. It's just that, you know, when we're doing a development like this and two-to-one slopes, we've always do developments in two-to-one slopes, fills and cuts. And we have ge- geotetical, you know, uh, engineers that, uh, you know, just believe that and, uh, um, their expertise shows that we can build, uh, slopes of of that, that thickness, um, we're going to, we're going to put them on our plans.
You know, it's my understanding, Kelly, that's me here if I'm misremembering this, that it's not terribly uncommon for grading codes in other municipalities to allow a a two-to-one by right when reported with geotech information.
Yeah, um, some do, some don't.
Yeah, but you know, we also have the the preview to choose to make three-to-one the the default, which we have, so. Um, it's not like it's unheard of, but.
We've allowed two-to-one.
Yeah.
Other situations.
However, I think that potentially, you know, not not an exhaustive list by any means, but potentially we usually do it for the purposes of like enabling the development in general rather than reference, so. Which is, I think, what Mr. would be, I'm sure, in his response.
Well, I think Brendan's question though points to, is it, is it a compelling reason to make it two-to-one?
Yeah.
And I think that's the question, is it compelling enough to make it two-to-one?
Yeah.
And like, and again, we're, we show, we're showing you, we can still make the development work with the three-to-one shit. It's just reduction of ten spaces as well as that sidewalk. I mean, we could put the sidewalk on on the property, but it's not going to go anywhere because there's no access.
Well, yeah, I mean, my opinion is I th- I understand the case for that particular modification request a bit more given.
There's only one house down there, right?
Uh, well, at this point, I think there's only going to be one or two, but I mean, it, it's, it's not a widely accessed.
It's also a fairly good-sized, deep slope to get up to Perry Highway, if I remember correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a pretty intense road.
Brendan, anymore?
Does your stormwater calculation change going from the two-to-one to three-to-one? Well, on that slope area itself?
We, we, we would, um, it, the only, the two-to-one slope is on that where that parking lot is at. So, so we did it based off of the, the, the more asphalt, you know, which is the two-to-one slope. If we, you know, we cannot get the modification, we go to, have to go three-to-one, that would just be less pavement, so it'd be better for our stormwater management.
So it's not going to impact anything going down on that road?
Correct, no. We're still collecting the water in those catch spaces, you know?
Except what's on that slope.
Correct.
Which is just sheet flow down.
Yes, it'll just be more, more green space. Yes.
John?
Uh, well, I I had some of the the same questions Shelley did about the stormwater, but I think we already talked about that, so, uh, I'll, I'll leave that be. Um, I mean, regarding the slope, I I kind of had the same question that Brendan did regarding whether it's necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, you know, my, my, I, I guess this is more of a comment than a question, but, uh, I have no issue with the two-to-one slope with, with the, you know, geotech recommendation that it's going to be stable, but I don't really see a compelling reason why it's necessary. If anything, this might already have more than adequate parking for, you know, future needs, given where the industry is going. And it was not to accommodate a structure or access or something like that. I, I just, I'm having a hard time justifying why why even go with the variance, but that's just my opinion.
I agree with all the the above, nothing new.
Uh, let me go back to the EV charging stations because the, the, I don't have an EV, um, so I don't know these answers. Uh, as I understand it, the discussion tonight, anybody, any Tom, Dick or Harry can come off the street and use those.
That's what I was, yes, that's what we're planning on.
How is that paid for? How is he charged, he or she charged?
I think it's by, I, I don't have it, I don't have one, but I think it's by credit card machine.
You stick a credit card?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you have an app that works with that.
I think they're going to be billed, I mean, by by the individual, you know, whoever needs to have that. I mean, I don't think, I mean, they're going to be, they could, they'd be for the public, but the public's going to have to pay for it.
Right, basically like a.
Yeah, I think you have like a, as soon as you plug it in, it recognizes your card, you have an account set up.
And, uh, this is perhaps beyond the scope of this commission, but the liability, the insurance, the things that are required, if something happens to that uh, individual who's charging their car on your property, you've got them covered?
That's, that's a more legal question, which I don't, uh, I would not answer. I can't answer that one. I mean, I I assume these are going to be just like going to a gas station, same thing and filling your, you know, you have the same kind of what they say, the responsibility. I mean, they're going to have the same responsibility of charging their vehicles. Um, yeah.
You're not going to have a fire suppression system or anything over the chargers?
Yes.
That would be a building code question.
Yeah.
He's not proposing one of that.
Right, yeah. But if it's something that's required, not that I know that it.
Now, it's, there has to be, there has to be safety requirements, you think.
Open.
Out, out there right now for these, you know, EV powers, you know, uh, stations, so I, I assume we're going to, you know, follow whatever code is, you know?
And I think, I think Pennsylvania is on the east end right now for, I'm using, we're always a couple years long.
Yeah, no, it's just.
It was mentioned as a quick charge. How quick is quick?
Twenty-five, thirty minutes.
Yeah, I think it's going to be like half an hour maximum, I think, yes.
And again, from a non-user, how much does that cost? Anybody know?
Depends on the machine and what contract they come up with.
I don't know, okay.
I don't have a.
Two eighty-nine a gallon.
Pardon?
Two eighty-nine a gallon.
And the other thing is. Vehicles very likely aren't gonna sit there for a full charge.
Right.
So they're, they're gonna take a twenty, thirty percent charge and go on their way unless they're on a trip.
Right.
And they're following all the Ford dealership across the US.
Okay. I mean, I, I was, I know I sat in a, a, uh. An EV car and they, they do show a map and they show you where all the charging stations are, so you can go to them, you know? I assume that's gonna be like one, you know, you'll be able to go to here.
All right. Thank you.
I.
Any, uh, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just, I just wanted to, um. There was a, I thi- I think you guys brought it up. There was where. There's these double parking spaces?
We, we removed those already. Uh, I think that was one of the comments from the, from the town.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, we, sometimes, you know, other. Dealerships, they don't mind having double parked cars because it says for storage of their vehicles, you know? Uh, but I believe that was, uh, the, or we weren't meeting the ordinance requirements, so we removed those spaces.
The wood, okay, okay.
That's what it shows on the plans here now that we don't have those.
You won't have room for them anymore if you don't.
I was looking at what's in front of me.
Well, either way, the two to one, every one, we removed them.
You're gonna lose them anyway.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any more on the commission? We have any comments from?
Well, so we only take comments when we, um. Are taking an action. I did not put this on for emotion because.
That's fine.
Several pages.
Yeah.
So.
We will be.
You're gonna get us some some revision.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments from the engineering other than that they might have already seen?
This, the stormwater, um, no, not on the, the other one. Um, the stormwater where our main item's just getting clarification on the ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the outflow of stormwater and making sure our rate at that one point is less than our precondition, so we're not creating overflow conditions.
Okay.
There were a bunch of outstanding issues that are coming in in their responses, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so you've received all the engineering comments, you're gonna address those and you said perhaps in a week or so?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we'd like to be back, so when's the next planning commission?
You know, short duration because this one had to be moved forward, so the fifth, December fifth. The next day, revisions. Yeah, would, if you, did you say this week or next week?
I, well, let's, 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 uh, say next week, say.
Next week's Thanksgiving, so just.
Yeah, yeah, probably by W- the Wednesday? Third, Tuesday?
With, hmm, I mean, uh, understanding that it's a short.
Mm-hmm.
Time, but do, get what you can in because. Usually we say two or four weeks ahead of the meeting and that's about the end of this week, um. Just so you're aware, because I think Steve may have handled this when we last spoke about it. Um, the review period since it's been extended already. Currently is ending at the end of the year, so unless everything is done and buttoned at this December commission meeting. You may need to, I mean, you may need to come back and you also. Even if you don't, you know, you need more than one meeting for town council.
You might need to give you attention.
Yeah, so, um, just keep that in mind, let's see maybe where we're at.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be pretty comfortable with what we, uh. The comments, I think we can address all of them, so we can.
We'll just, we'll just keep an eye on that. Typically. Sometimes town council may, I think, cancel the last meeting of the year if. Which would be the eighteenth this year because, uh, otherwise it would be on Christmas. Um, if we have no items, if you all are ready to move on to your town council, by, you know, I guess probably the eighteenth.
Eighteenth would be the council meeting?
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing that's, we usually move it to the third Monday, um, for December, so. If we're enough that we can get a vote at that point, we'll do it. If not, like, just let's keep in contact so that we can make sure council knows what may be coming to play by. Eleventh.
All right.
Okay.
I think that's it. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item two on the agenda is Walnut Court Phase Two Land Development Application. Um, we also have a presentation.
Greetings, I'm Doug Reinhardt from Marx Consulting Engineers. Here representing Walnut Court Phase Two. Which is a located at the end of the cul-de-sac of Walnut Court. The first phase of the townhouse subdivision. What we're proposing is a extension. Uh, we're probably wanting off that cul-de-sac for construction of seven more townhouse units. On an original piece of property that was one acre in, uh, in size. Uh, to create the new lot for the seven townhouses. We're gonna also have to consolidate. The one acre property with parcel A within Walnut Court. And then once that's consolidated, subdivide that to create lot two oh one for the townhouse units. And the private access easement in my, right away for the access road in Hammerhead Turnaround. We're also, uh. Proposing. Six modifications as part of this development. Goes up here. First being the, um. Length of the cul-de-sac street. Yours requires a length of a minimum two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, due to the size of the property. Uh, we can only obtain two hundred and forty-six point five feet for that length of cul-de-sac. The next modification will be the, uh. Should be, uh, by the figure turnaround that meets cul-de-sac standards. We're proposing once again the hammerhead because of the. Size of the site and how tight it is to fit seven units in the grading within the property. We're gonna go with the hammerhead, which. Uh, is, does not meet the eighty foot partway diameter. Um, for that. The other, uh, modifications, once again, is for the, uh. Cul-de-sac that, uh. Requires that, uh, T-turnarounds will not be permitted as temporary permanent facilities. For this, uh. Modification. We cannot, uh, meet the cul- cul-de-sac requirements because. Doing so will lose approximately four of the seven units to be able to put that cul-de-sac again with the rating. Which will not make the site feasible for this development. The other one will be the grading for, uh. Using two to one slopes. For this project. Um, we have the GeoTen report that supports using two to one slopes. Um, if we were to use three to one slope on this project. It will not be, there'll be no room to actually construct the units. If you had left any room, we were talking probably twenty foot engineered walls along perimeter to property. To the, uh, east and to the south. To fit any of the units in there, so we're asking for that modification. And then also for modification, that, that when we have slopes that exceed fifteen feet in height. That we have to be, uh, more than twenty feet away from the property. There are two points along the eastern property line. That we're gonna crush on that twenty foot because of the two to one slope. And the construction units and creating the paths for those units. We're asking for that modification as well. And then there's. Also one additional modification that, when we did the original submission, we didn't ask for. Uh, this came from reviewing the, uh. Engineering comments from Gateway Engineers. The detention tank that's located in the turnaround, the hammerhead. Is gonna be closer than twenty feet of the, uh, eastern pro- of the southern property line, excuse me. So we're gonna need a modification for that as well. We're able to meet the distance, regard distance from the tank to the last unit of townhouse. We felt that would be more important than the real property line. Um, by the cul-de-sac, by turnaround. Also, as part of this, uh. Development, we are gonna need to obtain a grading easement. From MTSA, the grade on to a property. If we don't get that easement, the purpose of that easement, so we don't need a ten foot high engineered wall along there. To keep all the grading onto the property. So it's just more cost effective and be able to, uh, do this, uh, project.
So question, like, I don't need to be clear, but I feel like we're probably all wondering this, why did you put the townhome units here? Instead of like closer to the other units, like, is there something from the prior development? Because it looks like it's up, they're already over one.
Right, right, and you know, like you got room to.
Utility, utility line presumably theoretically can be moved unless this electric line is like unmovable, but I, I mean, was there any exploration of? Chopping off half cul-de-sac that's already there and scooching things in a little bit?
Well, that would. So we looked at the cul-de-sac and moved it down to the end of the.
I mean, just.
Yeah, exactly.
And push everything.
Chop it up and try again, that's like, I mean, what, did, did you take a look at that or you're kind of just trying to fit with what you already built? Like, what, what's going on here?
One, we're, we're trying to get everything that was already built, we know that's been already subdivided off and, and sold the. Uh, what, that northern property line of, um. Of lot two oh one that joins property line, line of that townhouse. Was already sold on by somebody else.
So that whole. That, that whole. N-Cap Townhome has all that.
All that land?
Uh, yeah, for. This spot, yeah.
I mean, I, I guess if you didn't anticipate, I would kind of see it very generous.
All right. So in, in line with the cul-de-sac.
You wanna see if the person you sold to wants to sell you any yard?
My question regarding the cul-de-sac is, you're not building a two hundred and forty-six foot cul-de-sac. You're building an addition to a cul-de-sac. It's all one cul-de-sac, is it over eight hundred feet, which is what our restriction is?
That I would have to look into.
The correct interpretation, uh.
So you.
Let's see.
So the cul-de-sac really. Is from the public road.
Oh.
Which is Delane, oh.
Ooh, you're close, GIS says. Probably somewhere around eight hundred and fifty feet. For the whole length of the, of, of, you know, what is essentially a dead end.
But now he's adding two hundred and fifty.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm eyeballing it.
Going to the, okay.
Eyeballing it, yeah, so I'm taking it like halfway through.
Just something you need to think about.
Yeah.
Um, there is a restriction in the new SALDO that two hundred and fifty is a minimum, eight hundred is a maximum.
Correct.
Yeah, I definitely want to take that measurement from the intersection of Delane all the way to the, to the Hammerhead or.
We were, we were considering the, the private driver coming off the cul-de-sac. As the new intersection point for the new.
No.
So I have to go all the way down to Del.
Yes.
Cause I mean, where else is the car gonna come?
Yeah, it's a single entry point.
You know?
Just your very. Dirty, uh. Uh, calculation was eight hundred somewhat feet to the existing cul-de-sac?
No, that, I'm, I'm guessing like, so here's the property right here. On GIS. I took it about halfway through the depth of the property, so you know, it might be, but I don't, I don't think we're gonna get less than fifty feet because from here to where, well. Depending on how short the yards are.
It'll get a little bit to be looked at.
Yeah, we need, we need like a real.
I, I guess my point is, if, if the eight hundred is the maximum, we're clearly in excess of eight hundred. If we go to all the way to the Hammerhead.
She's saying that it, it may be close.
Well, you know what, if the hammerhead's all the way in the back of the property line, then yeah, it's probably closer.
Yeah.
Well, he's adding two hundred and fifty, be two hundred and forty-six point five feet.
Right, so I just don't know what the other end is, what that measure is.
Well, we definitely would need an updated measurement of this to Delane.
Yeah.
Uh, at, at best, yeah, I mean, we might be close to a thousand feet.
Yeah.
If you go all the way to the property line as proposed, so. Let's just get an updated number for that.
Okay, we can look, we can verify that.
Yeah, wow, you really do have that hanging in it, has a. Nice juicy yard. It's thanks to you.
Sure they paid for it, though.
They probably did.
Um.
Okay, um. We've, uh, talked about the grading easement, sorry, I remember we left off here, sorry. The, uh, Santa service mission was made the MTSA for the extension coming up, uh, to service those seventy units. As well. Um. Reviewed the comments from Gateway Engineers. Uh, we didn't see anything that we couldn't address so far when we reviewed them. So we're in the process right now of addressing those as we speak. On there. Uh, is there any other questions?
Uh. You were talking about it, asking for as modification potentially in the new seven units. Uh, behind them as a two to one slope? Correct. What is the existing, what is the, uh, grading on the existing units?
They're also two to one.
That is two to one?
Yeah, we're two to one, yes.
So you're really asking for getting the same treatment as the.
Correct, but basically what we're doing here, it'd be the same as what we got approved in phase one.
Yeah.
For the grading.
So this is a, a private road?
Yes.
The, do the, is there a homeowners association that maintains it or is the developer maintain?
The homeowners association.
That's it.
Home, yeah, homeowners association.
I wonder how the fire marshal would feel about a.
Send him the dimensions.
The hammerhead, yeah, they've got to look at it, because that's.
So, so what his comments were, he, he asked for some updated dimensions, which, um, the developer did send us. I think, you know, within the last few days, um, so he's still taking a look at those.
Yeah.
His. Statement was assuming that the turning templates work and the dimensions meet the fire code, he is not opposed to it. Um, yeah, which, I mean, the turning template, so like my untrained, non-fire marshal, I, the truck appeared to turn, you know, and what you sent me, but we're.
Correct, it, it could accommodate a forty foot truck.
Yeah.
Not sure what.
It's still, I still feel a little funky about, you know, I mean, depending on what, whether we do. Entertain a longer dead end or, you know, whatever happens with the length of this road, like what it, what is the plan for the traffic movement of the. You're gonna throw like a tree in the middle, you know, like where's the left lane, where's the right line?
You now have a roundabout instead of.
But like a roundabout with no.
Yeah.
Interception.
No definition. Gotta have an island or something.
Yeah.
Right now, there was, there was no, there was no plan for that since they, they were private. And then how, I mean, this, going backwards, only access in seven units, there'll be just figured, the amount of traffic wouldn't be that great. To create a roundabout, I guess? Where actually lanes?
It looks insane.
It just looks like an afterthought, and I guess it is an afterthought, but it.
I mean, the.
It looks like it's tactile.
Property at the time, so I understand you're kind of working with what you got here already, not anticipating that this was gonna happen, but. We're squeezing, no. It's, 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 it's an interesting. Road.
I mean, can you reorient? So if, if, say, just hypothetically. The, what, southern side of it? Am I looking north and down the street?
Plant north of north, I believe.
Yeah.
So on, on the south, if, if you cut that part to try to narrow that cul-de-sac.
No.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you just do something to reorient the angle on the turn. Can you, can you shift the houses?
We did look at that.
Different way to get more of just like a turn at the end versus a.
Yeah, what we did was that if you come up on the travel line of Walnut Court, you go straight into the hammerhead. There would be no going around the cul-de-sac a little bit, then turning, it'd be more of a straight movement coming in. The problem with that is. Is that the water coming off of the road above us, the stormwater come down the hill, we have to collect that. And we have to create a channel for that, that has memory slope requirements. And plus the geotechnical report within here, we have to be so many feet off the proper line with that channel. We can't grade any of that building walls. On that side, so that's why the road is where the road is actually. From, so from the lower portion of the property coming up dictated by that channel and the existing soils. And the road from the, uh, eastern side coming down is dictated, uh, by the driveway, it's the units, the units, yard, the pad requirement. And the grading go along that side. Cause once we go. Further down. This starts harder to keep by, trying to catch that slope with the grades.
Can you, can you, so I, I'm, I'm. Can you, can you, so I, I'm, I'm. Sympathetic because it seems like you've got a lot of things you're working with on this site. And driven by there, doesn't seem like a bad community of new housing. So, you know, do, do these proposed seven units have to be oriented like this? Can you? Take another, putting aside the cul-de-sac length issues, can you put a north-south there and orient them? North-south so they don't. Orient them east-west basically, north-south streets so they're not facing.
Put this plan left basically.
Yes, north-south, east-west, can you rotate them on like a spur street a little bit?
Yeah, like an access drive in the back, if that's even a model you do, I don't know. It just is, this is just a bit awkward.
That we would have to look about the uh. Have to look uh, to my concern. That channel on that side there, if they would fit still. But I say put the units in the back and put the hammerhead along the front of them as their accents to come off the hammerhead. Back of the better turn.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, without, we haven't done the whole round robin thing yet, but. That's a, that's a lot of modification requests. I think the most I've had come in has been four and, and those were weird things like, you know, trees. And, and that had to be taken down because they were in the way of the building when we got the board, you know, so. I, I get the sense that maybe this group is gonna struggle a little bit with six or seven modifications for a plan. You know, that's kind of the early feedback. Um, yeah.
Okay, no, definitely. Can, can I understand better the stormwater easement? Where does the stormwater go?
From where? From up slopes?
Yeah.
So there is a town owned and wall up the hill here that comes down this slope. So they have to capture it and convey it around the site. So they're conveying it around the site and they're capturing the stormwater from the. From a portion of the road and the roof area. And they're sending it into, there's a little bi-retention area and then a underground tank. And then there is a point where the channel that comes up, up slope that's going through the property. Will also meet the outflow from the tank and it gets discharged through an adjacent property. Where they say they have an existing twenty foot storm sewer easement already in place and it discharges into a stream.
So they put this in.
They.
On their property, they picked up, they had to pick up what was coming from the town.
That's what they're proposing to do.
Yes.
So then they don't have water problems from upstream on there.
So that easement, I mean, you can realign it, right?
If you're concerned. On the property, on their property?
Yeah.
Yeah, they could, they could adjust it.
Realign what? I'm sorry.
The stormwater easement that you're concerned about for the, for the location of the road?
The channel location.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, I have to start the channel here because I have to catch that pipe. So how do I catch the water coming off that pipe? The channel needs to be there to catch that water. That's where, so that's started the channel.
Hmm.
So I would have this, so because of that channel in that location, it pretty much dictates where that channel is and how that channel is aligned.
And it has to go south? It can't go east?
Well, if it goes east, then I'm losing units, losing two units based on this configuration. Losing, you know, a couple of units for the grading.
You got a really tight site is your issue for the units that you're proposing.
I'm not gonna argue that point. It's a tight site.
I, I mean, without, without telling, you know, our friend Don here how to spend his dollars. I'm curious about other orientations just because. So it's got some challenges. And I mean, it's kind of a square, you know, so. Aside from the actual grading, the stormwater, et cetera, which I know are all barriers. It, in theory, the units themselves could still. Okay.
Because, really?
What's it, what's the difference uh, east to west?
You're dropping.
Four and fifty feet. Oh, east to west.
You're dropping forty-six feet from the western property line to the. So we're done, he's, the years, like this, only steps going to every unit and we step in the building. Cause.
You have forty-six.
You mean, you mean.
From one end of the townhouse to the other end, we'll have forty some feet of drop.
Oh yeah, so I see, I see that they're, they're way that you meant you guys can. They show up a little better, but. You know, the grading.
Let's, they have a good grade on the road too.
And that would affect the road as well. I mean, we're doing a lot of grading in the back here to get the uh, grade for the hammerhead, you know? To meet, so we're doing a lot of grading back there.
My man, in terms of those.
The actual grade on the road.
Cross up of the road.
Does he wanna go?
Yeah, I guess. Uh, we've heard a lot of comments already, but start down to your end now. Brendan?
Yeah.
Nothing, John?
Nothing, I haven't already discussed. I think it's just, it's like too many units for this space, but the number of modifications we fired.
Yeah, without being able to picture that topography very well. Right now, you've got seven units in a line, if you. Hypothetically, if you went out four units and then three heading. Uh, west, so you made an L.
Hmm.
Uh, maybe that doesn't work with the topography.
Also probably have close to like a twenty foot drop from one end to the other and trying to.
Yeah, I mean, you, you mentioned you were gonna do a lot of grading anyway, but I was just, I'm just trying to think of a way to get those, those units to. Not just be this long stretch that goes virtually all the way to that southern property line or close to it. Which causes some of the problems here.
This is topography that dictates how this is orientated right now.
Okay. How many units are in the other section? I forget.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
This is, you know, fourth, the third, uh, fourth uh, increase, twenty-five percent increase in, in the property. Good. By the twenty-seventh soul?
I think just about all of them are, yeah, not all. Cause we've done, we only have one subdivision left, right? Did we do all those?
All subdivisions are done for the units.
Um. Yes, you know, as far as the modification, as far as the modification on the. Road and the cul-de-sac, I mean, the cul-de-sac is there, I mean, um, already, that's why we want to cut it out. It's not a. A matter of uh. The, the, the road is barely traveled, so you're talking about. Reforce to those twenty-seven units never used the cul-de-sac. Actually, no one uses the cul-de-sac except delivery. Those people drive up the road, they turn into their driveways, they back out of their driveways and they go back out on the.
I think, I think not so much just hammerhead versus cul-de-sac. We're just talking about the sheer length of this street until you hit. An intersection.
Which is a concern from a emergency vehicle standpoint and that's why it's in the code now that there's a maximum length.
Yeah.
Cause if there's any kind of a blockage in that road, there's no other way for emergency vehicles to get through.
Right, right. So that's, I mean, there's, there's probably. Huh?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred to another point.
Eight hundred to the public road access.
Well, yeah, but to.
Or to.
To some intersection.
Yeah, it is, you know.
Would you take it down to Dell?
Yeah, from, from Dell on to the very back needs to be measured clearly.
Yes.
Um.
Cause then we can at least see the degree of modification we're asking for.
Uh, any, Shelley, I haven't heard from you, I don't think.
I, I think it's kind of a ditto. I think that, I do think it's a, it's turned out to be a nice development. Um, I'm not opposed to development, but I just think it's, you know, put simply too much on too little. And I don't think that modifications of this magnitude and this number. Um, I get the feasibility part of it, but. If it can only be three or four or five townhomes versus. So desired amount, then that's maybe what this property really needs to have.
I think, I mean, what I'm hearing is not necessarily that everyone is opposed to modifications, period. At least we did grant them, you know, at times. With, with seven is a lot.
Well, potentially eight, the length of the road.
Well, I'm adding, I think it was six and then I, I think. We have quite a few, like if, if there's anything that, that can be fiddled with to at least cut it down a little bit, maybe that's gonna be a better conversation. Cause I mean, they're, they're discretionary people. They don't, they don't have to, you know. So, that's a lot of things that can go wrong if that's what it's engine on. I think that was kind of what I'm, what I'm hearing there is the best. Yeah.
I think that's fair summary.
Yeah.
Um. So uh, next steps are going to be for you to make a. One, measure the road and do a few of the other calculations that are uh, that we're talking about here. Take some additional looks at configurations as to what may or may not help in all of these modification requests. Yeah. And then uh.
Yeah.
Be ready for the next meeting if that's when you want to choose to try to do this.
Yeah, December third, if you want, or if not, then we're looking at. Oh, January, January second.
Well, really, the submission date for the seventh.
Um, I mean, usually we ask for, always for review, so it's, but that will be the end of this week, so. Understand, I mean, we'll, we'll try to get what we can turned around, but it might just be a challenge because of the holiday to get a full. Board review letter out. So I'd say send what you got as soon as you got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Um. Looks like what's left is item number three, the approval of the October third, twenty twenty-three minutes. Any changes, edits, comments on the minutes? Nothing? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty, April, excuse me, October third minute?
Second.
Second, Shelley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, and then general public comments. Sir, in the back of the room, any public comments? Uh, then we're ready for adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn? So move second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.